It is now 6:30 on April 21st. I have our five best special media from the Dona Rose Board of Education in the world. You're very good to call out.
Mr. Ron.
Yeah.
Mr. McKenna.
Here.
Mr. Patsy.
Here.
Mr. Aaron.
Here.
So, join me here. I'm sorry. Can I change things just a little before we go? I'm gonna let people ask questions. We have a team of administration and a super or they answer the questions best they can, as we can. As you please be courteous in your questions. We're not gonna have personally directed questions. Anything that relates to employees, employees, that type of thing, we're not gonna allow. But policy and what's going on, this is all purely. Yeah, if you know what you're gonna see, like a question concealer, it's overall team. You go ahead and sign it out. We are going to try now and we'll use of keeping it to five minutes per person for question. We'll give a little bit of leeway to touch on there and how the question in the interest sessions going, we want to try every question. So we're not gonna try to let people go for 10, 15 minutes. We're gonna try to keep it to five. All right, if anyone wants to get started and hop up and ask a question, you're welcome to sign in or if a person wants to come ask a question, you're starting after you want to get started.
I'll get started tonight. I hear it's an old American, you guys, prior to, he was all in the offside.
I think it's okay speaker with a mask on if that makes it easier for you to speak.
I'd like to start, and you probably, you guys are all listening, probably here for this at night, it's all been a long for me, but I think the entire board needs command for that to still here, you know, wraps up here. It was a talk, especially Dr. Clark, you have people pulling on the one side, following the other, I reach out, you know, like, you know, I could please everybody, but I think the board has known his job, but trying to keep the school open as fast as we could while also balancing the safety of the kids. I think the board deserves, you know, all the commendation for that, especially the communication of parents. I did wanna say specifically to the principal super that I saw. Recall, I don't know if all the women principals did it, but to call each parent anytime in the COVID related issue, we explained exactly what it was. I can't imagine how we're spending, that's calm, each individual parent instead of calling a secretary, they're just fighting the topic of mass memory. I don't think those districts would have done it. And they could offer an opportunity personally to ask some questions, you know, figure out what happened, where to go from there. Two issues that I'd like to address, I probably use up a chunk of my time on my social media. Social media, I reached out to you, Dr. Clark, a few months ago, use of employee invited district, I wanted to bring this up specifically to the board. The question is, and I'll make it rhetorical, does the board have any policies for any controversial political posts and platforms totally accessible by administrators or staff that the students can feed? If not, if we can't, we ought to take all of all those records and everyone has the right to their own. Problem is, a lot of the staff are mixing their official school account. I don't wanna say official, because everyone sees their own accounts, like on Twitter, and it's mixing in the personal account, other job related stuff, all these students are seeing this stuff. And you brought up the Dr. Clark a few months ago, when I went to the school, we asked a teacher on Twitter, who can vote for him? And he said, they didn't figure that out, I'm doing my job. And I thought at least a dozen relatively high ranking staff members that, that who was here right here is who pulled a part of it onto which candidate, say endorsing endorsing, and which social media didn't say endorsing, simply by not even the Twitter account, but clicking on yours and clicking on something that you tweeted for that or something there, it was all the staff members. Who owns the accounts that have staff members and administrator here too? And that is the answer.
My belief, the question you're posing is causing me to think I need to reach out to Lincoln to get, because I might have to double check answer. My belief is that personal Twitter accounts, personal Facebook accounts belong to the individual, and the individual has a right to, say, personal kind of beliefs, however not when they're on school due, school time, or school commitment, or those two things.
So my concern here is that some of them are for government, local government, and it's very clear around the law, you're representing yourself as a member of the organization in any way online, you leave everything else off of that. It's their official communication gone. I'm gonna make a suggestion to the board, that the board should own any account where an administrator on the school or a school staff is sweeping anything of an official capacity. We all remember, they bring it up, let's see, good, let's see, you know, back when we were in our backups, that happened again in another staff. And the board has no access to shut down their, their ability to access students. And some of them are feeling respectful, and yourself, Dr. Clark, and not getting in situations. The board would have no way to shut down access if there were even an out reason, because the board doesn't own that. The board can't endorse, the board can't hold back, the board can't track any account from bill, principal, or administrator. And the board is ultimately, as you guys know, who's a congo to the tax paper of the district. So my suggestion would be that the board have a policy that's aligned with many other government organizations, that anything official coming from the school, especially considering students, any information, free communication about building these two students, that account owned by the board, a representative of the board, an professor, something that's appropriate to come out, say for example, Mr. Ron, you would be able to log on, delete that, immediately start addressing it to the board without having to first reach out to the employee and put it up. I think I've figured that out pretty clearly. Finally, there's political ideologies of staff, and so you're sweeping out to the students and parents. Unfortunately, seems to be particularly in Gonzales. Handwritten and intended to address this, that the fact that these isolated incidents have been brought to my attention, but it doesn't have aggressive work before people feel like, I guess they can call me, tell me, and then I'll do something about it. We've seen even promotions from you, Dr. Clark, looks up white for July, right, white for July, promoting handover offers, supporting Democrat candidates. You're very intelligent, but you're already a video, but I'm very conscious of being about all this question. Have you done anything on the political sector? I haven't been able to find anything on it Twitter. So that, you're imagining the impressive student, this kind of holiday, and I'm like this, and then you do that. Specifically, there's a model named E. Brenner, E. Brenner Kennedy. He's an anti-capitalist, anti-capital activist, he's performed on a critical race theory, and he's made claims such that, quote, "A white terror is American as a soldier's charge." He, some kind of a way to use on the, is he attacked? White characters that adopt black children, if they're trying to occupy the result. He has a notebook up. Unfortunately, it's a record towards children, trying to teach them about race. Obviously, a problem like that, at least the board will want to be able to prove, you know, something being taught to our children. On November 4th of the Dona Rose, we had tweeted an editorial that said, "This will be ordered for sure for our students." Remember, it's served that tweet was seen and liked by the superintendent, if you recall. The staff, some of them may be aware, staff have recently received a racially charged letter in their district own mailbox, it's from a leftist organization. How did they get on our animals? Who put it there? Has anyone looked into how it got there, or why it was deemed acceptable? You know, certainly, if there was some, make a very great event, it's sort of a door. Somebody went to that and said, hey, that's not appropriate to be put in the mailbox. So I'm trying to emphasize on the board, the community here is pretty middle of the world, we're equally just about represented by Democrats and Republicans. The school board should be reflecting that, right down the middle, and I feel like a building for Twitter accounts, or social media, or mailboxes, many of our employees, administrators should be pushed down where, you know. The last thing, probably the most fun, when I say the last, and it's mainly because I came here tonight. We acted, applaud Dr. Clark, for all the unity and diversity, you know, the unity is signed everywhere. I feel like our district is and should continue to be a very well place for people of all sorts. But I have to ask, does that include cops? Does that include law enforcement? Does that include our full resource officers and other purchase partners? I asked, because yesterday was brought to my attention through a picture of artwork that is hanging in the high school on a prominent display, specifically this artwork that said that blue lies don't exist. What blue lies, 800,000 cops in America that are serving our communities, the 6th, the serve, opposite and deputies, the serve, the Dona Rose, on a daily basis. I don't know why the art was not to be created in our classroom, or a worksheet or an administrator looked at that, but hey, that's it, let's put it on prominent display. This year, a, our school recent officer in the high school, I hate that I'm mentioning this, is retired after the deputy service of Mass City. The man is walking past that, when we're leaving, mangos, and the theme of the school year. We may have to say, someone needs to find out, someone needs to make sure that's not happening. This particular artwork also promoted a T-shirt, and was critical of the Gadsden flag, which is often, you know, God on recent services, will fly it. That is, this stuff has no place in our school, on the left, we're on the right. Our school, our kids, the P and C, they're learning how to, not what the thing is. There's also, and I hope someone on board is aware, or Dr. Clark, maybe, somewhere saw graffiti in the Hill Plaza, white with a blue eye on its face, and they're not gonna shut us up or something along those lines. Dr. Clark, you guys, you know, more than 1% of phones that were taken at all. Finally, I just wanna tell you guys, Sam, you know, I know sometimes you like to put people out either way over, some of these all performers really hard. Man, there's a goal board in the block, you're the same here, you know, right along like you have. So thank you very much, I don't want you guys to feel like I'm coming down and you just offered some suggestions. The board needs a lot of social media, they're going to lead to the district, leading or posting for students, and we need to figure out why there's an idea of increasing our schools, and why four, five teachers, not teachers, but school staff, not just teachers, reach out to me personally, because they're great standing there and talking about something that opposes a particular political objective. They're there for their jobs and their kids and so. My, Dr. Clark, I'm standing here, you're the guy that's not, excited with them. You're very receptive and very professional when I reach out. I think it is the board, you guys need to make sure that your policy plays, just like other government agencies, where you deal with professional or personal, and there's no line, that students are following, swear they're not under students' stuff. You guys have recently, I'll finish it, you guys recently heard from an intern, a social worker intern that's trying to get a job in this. So I had a Twitter, I clicked on his name, absolute far left, anti beliefs, some of the most disgusting things that I personally seen posted relating to a professional, I believe, to my heart. One of them was likely got the thought, turned out to be completely false until the investigation was done. Is anyone as worried looking into social media, the book club or something? Because I can tell who my children are attracted to, and if they need a social worker at the high school, when they're gonna be there for two years, and that's what that person's posting on my, my children are not gonna be comfortable. At the time of the, going to top of school, not for a social worker, that has maybe not been a warm-up, or we did that. Thank you, thank you for asking, which are here for a lot of other people, and we're very grateful for it.
Thank you. I'll make a, yeah, make sure you sign up for it. A statement and then I'll ask Casey to come up. The statement is, we will thank you for bringing all those points up. It is, frankly, social media has become ubiquitous in all sorts of ways, and we as school officials go to legal updates all the time, and talk about properties of social media and those sorts of things. And as a result, your concerns expressed here today, I will reach out to our Lady Council again to give a opinion about what exactly is and is not appropriated for a Twitter account, or a Facebook account, or Instagram account, and when does public become private and those sorts of things. I would love to do that, and I am glad, I said that, yes, I am where, the Art Work, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Rutter to come up, because I think maybe there are other people here who have questions about, but that was absolutely done with. Casey, could you come up quickly and just kind of explain what happened and how the store responded to that, please?
Dr. Clark, my name is Laura, thank you for giving our team, kind of talked about, I'm just like, you know, working, so I got tips to win this social media myself, and so I figured this is likely to be a topic of fact, so I'm gonna talk about what happened, what happened, what's the situation. So in this situation, we have an APR system, so what's APR portfolio system, this is what we're gonna do here. There were a couple of students at our school that submitted work at the end of the year for health card, right? So we have seven students submitting work for the health credit, and these were one of the staff's students. Brought to our community, and I was a fool with about what that was, it was brought to our country, that as this stuff was going on, that someone was by the, in a program, I think this is a program. And one of them took me, the one that said, blue lights, blue lights don't exist, and I was also a setup on the bigger, but I'm thinking along the line, I love the happen to itself, that I think is controversial, and that's why I think it's controversial, is it's a middle of a hall, right? And when you're walking in the middle of a hall, it's hard to kind of explain what that means, or what that's supposed to mean. And it's obvious, you know, this is true, or someone might have an opinion about that. But we'll tell you about this one, this one is gonna be one of the most controversial among all, I would say, the things that are most, more controversial. In this particular case, this person was investigating how democracy can tend people to violate. And what's said is, democracy as a way of, why do you need to outside of the stuff, and you use artwork to kind of explain it? And it uses a lot of artwork that means, uh, capital, uh, drive people, keep them out of the fads, and I think it's just one of the very chief. And the top corner, there was this guitar, and it's, uh, blue lights, don't get it wrong, right? And what, I think that, and he should be cutting down, and he should put the whole guitar down, and I was very curious, I wasn't that by that, and it's like, it was a, I could see her, her brother, but what she's trying to say is, as soon as somebody sees the word blue lights, they immediately have a emotional reaction. And I think it's a key, we've addressed that so well, but you have an emotional reaction that you drive off the top. And what you're saying in this, in this artwork, what you're saying is, is the more we do that, the more we use that, the more likely you'll see the cop there and, is what you're saying. The more likely you go, almost out of the cycle, based on emotional science, or whatever that is, we're like in heaven. And so, super creative, you can tell it's super smart, but in this particular case, what's the eyes? It's leaning in a, in a hole, right in the middle of a hole. A person with a boy or a girl, a 15 year old, walking down the hallway, grunting up at that, those are not the kind of people that is, and it's more to have an emotional response. In this certain situation, someone took a picture, also not social media, exactly at the back, so it was thrown around to funny places. It was probably about the happy hour, my CP doing a corporate, the whole, this guy, the guy who had a piss today, brought to our kicks, so I'm saying, a lot of kids, a lot of parents, about my picture, you talk to me, and I think, possible also reaction to that too, was we, you might have saw a feed, which we moved in a bathroom, that disagreed with us taking that down. We did have a good day, I do think that it, Ben Ross is very able to, it's not a bad story, but very, he can kind of, I think, do the same, and trust us, and that's what we do every day. So let me tell you why, why, you know, because it's a controversial thing, right? Because the principal has a right to remove artwork, in the middle, I'll tell you why, and that is more positive, and Mr. Keynes, thank you for bringing that up, and I've got a lot of, quickly, because you really got to understand more policy. More policy says, yes, you have a right to express, but you don't have a right to be these stats, and this is what happened in this situation. But if you don't have the right to have, present something, display something, that jumped up, caused a substantial disruption to the school, and you can imagine that artwork will cause a substantial disruption to the school, and also will start a substantial disruption to social media, which is, I got a lot of posts, and it's something good that, and substantial disruption to the parent, you know, and everything's a bit more automated, becoming, so let me, we took that down. There was a lot of things that we want to address, to address our students, just, it's a very complex thing, you're gonna have to do, and it didn't very far. So what I want to see, Dr. Riley, first, what's the business, is the size, what is appropriate, because I, I think we had decisions on the news up, and once I saw that, I immediately took out and said, that's not appropriate, and then I forgot what the document, the regular, overruled me too. That's how the board works. Dr. Clark, do you have any further questions, do you have any other?
Anybody on the board have any questions from Casey? Thank you, Casey. Yes, that includes, that includes community, yes. Well, I think we can talk about, if it's a substantial disruption, which it became to be, because when, generally, when something messes in the superintendent's office, you know, before midnight, or before 6:00 AM, there's a substantial disruption going on, and you're taking it down before that already, and the graffiti, I think it was a, was a voice gesture? It was a voice gesture, not a voice gesture, but the graffiti was invested, covered up and taken care of it.
I just wanna be sure that adversity, you know, maybe to be changed actually out of the solution to extend it beyond the students, then extend it to protect all the staff and people that come in, is it?
Yes, it does.
Contact personnel, so.
Yes, it does.
My name is Sixty Kova, I mean, I have four children, three boys, six girls, birth date is seventh, and a daughter, nine. I transferred from one of the donor schools to another private school at the beginning of this year because my kids needed normal in-person, like daily instruction. I'm here today because I know what we make in honor of returning to the dorm as sooner rather than later, and I think that as a board, it deserves to know the reasons why myself and others like me are apprehensive about sending our kids back next year. First and foremost, I have the ability of those with the data available, now I'm not walking away from our tender country, comparing the COVID infection rates in areas that have in-person school, all year, with those that didn't, and those which were hybrid and recognize that. And there was never any reason to have to make any child a part of the in-person education, since all the positive COVID case numbers are relatively the same, no matter which scenario, schools were functioning under, and hopefully can give parents confidence and believing that our children are not like anything like this last one didn't or the year before. I care deeply about our scholarship, and my boys want to be able to return to dorming again as soon as possible, so that they're able to continue playing football with their teams and coaches they have grown up with. The football staff, including former assistant coach Greg Rowan, who might think will one day return to a dorm this football program, and have an incredibly, incredibly big part in my son's lives, and we want them to be able to finish high school with the teams and coaches that they love. In addition to providing daily in-person education, another very important issue I'd like to address is that of the masking of our children. I'll read my boys' big football basketball baseball in the past year, completely unmasked. Out of the over 150 people that I know personally who have tested positive for COVID this year, the vast majority of them are religious mask wearers, who believe they did everything they were told to do, and that did not stop them from getting COVID. Masks tell me no positive infection can stop the spread of COVID, it's semi-sharply the fact, that all the children wearing masks at school have not been wearing them for the last year during any of their contact sports, and so the spread among kids is difficult there. I asked Dr. Clark to send you guys, I know he did last night, the article of scientific studies that show I guess are ineffective in preventing the spread of COVID, just 'cause something out really went. Besides, the COVID virus is 1,000 times smaller than the holes in these cloth masks. This mostly explains why, that we have this crazy spread, because of the false sense of security that actually given people. In addition to the ineffectiveness of masks, it is now known that serious complications from COVID in kids is incredibly rare, and now with vaccines being available to everyone at any real risk, I don't understand whether we can be even have this conversation, but we obviously do, since we're continuing to make our children participate in this year. Earlier in the year, I watched my little sunshine on a bus that football begins to over a half an hour, and then have to get off that bus and stand outside six feet away from his teammates, until it was called on the field to tackle someone. This is sheer hypocrisy that we are forcing our children to participate in. Even worse than the negative mental, social, and emotional effects of these masks are the physical risks we're typing with the wearing of them. I live in the kitchen at Lea, since returning to working, I'm gonna be around heat lamps, ovens, and dishwasher all day. I have developed three different oral hot infections, and my children each develop different physical issues within the first week of them or coming back to school as well. My kids are fortunate, their masks are strictly enforced at their schools, and my team oldest can't afford to remove their masks as often as possible, and have not had any other issues for the rest of the year, but my youngest two, who fear getting in trouble, have each developed multiple skin and respiratory infections throughout the year, because they don't take them off. Our issues are very ill compared to the two people I know personally, one is a dog, one is a child who have developed asthma, you know, this year, and another who had, whose daughter has walking pneumonia. Each of their doctors have told them at the asthma pneumonia, that they are a result of the prolonged mask running. With all my children looking after this, truly makes me fear what another year of doing these to my kids may result in. Since I were one of our schools, I observed firsthand how much more strict the mask needs to be during now. The students out looking at it, you know, required to wear masks during the gym, even though this isn't even our current state mandate. At the end of July, the government loses its unchecked rule of our state, and it is anticipated that the mask mandates will be removed. So what I am asking is that, when that time comes, our school is strict, they're about to get upon themselves to continue unnecessary dangerous policies for next year. I have read that this district has a board policy pertaining to masks, and the state order does not apply. State law or order does not supersede local. State law or order does not supersede local board policy. In the dorm, we have a facial covering policy, and it's been a bad board choice to us, just like we require our kids to wear masks, even though there has been an exemption given by the state for them since the beginning as well. Again, they need to make decisions for next year, being someone who's best for our kids now that we know so much more about COVID than we did at this time last year. Well, last important issue, that I do want to bring up, that kind of is similar to some of the things that I'm saying, I said, is this focus of race in our schools. I have lived in the dorm house since I was four years old, and I have never seen so many race-related problems in our community as I do now. I believe that the constant talk about race is actually dividing us. If we want to stop focusing on skin color, then I hope we need to stop talking about it continuously. Treat our kids like kids, and not worry about them kids. I believe that what began to appear out of good intentions is only hurting racist ideas the kids had that were not being heard again. As we, there were these magazines passed out to all the teachers, or they were, um, labeled to the teachers with their names on them, and the magazines were called Teaching Times, where, um, the front page story of these magazines read, "White supremacy affects every element of the US education system." And I have students, educators, and other stakeholders who assist daily. I feel sorry, I'm very slippery slope, and I really think we need to rethink and, um, pull back a little bit from where we're going with all this, and we are right, because I see race issues in all of our schools, and I hear about them continuously through the kids. They happen between the kids, and this is not how it was when I went to school 40 years ago. I think, thank you for our listeners coming, and I hope that you can learn our tradition. And I want to be more than 100 dorm mates to be the best I said I can be for our kids.
I just have a few things. Uh, along with, I would say, uh, first of all, our intention and our belief is that the school will be law and is predicted next year by the issue. I mean, there's some kind of public health, yeah, there's no public health, but, uh, that's the plan, and I believe some kind of public health, um, every, and I know them today, every Wednesday, and they, uh, still continue to believe that. Uh, they are torn on whether there will be masks required or not. Uh, we can wait and see about that. But I would more expect it to back in five days, next year, unless something goes crashing down. Um, the other thing, you talked about several things, I'm going to remember them all. Oh, uh, here, I want to put you on the spot if I can, because, you know, there's this rumor, uh, going around that there were these magazines placed in all the league's mailboxes, but we have absolutely no evidence that that actually happened. And I can have the principal and associate, actually principal to be, here, do you mind coming up and talking just about what you found, you know, as you tried? You came to our attention, this magazine may have appeared, uh, and call the publisher, and, Phil, Phil, talk to the staff, what, what'd you find out, Phil?
So I started running the, by crap, and then it was taken. So I got familiar with Teaching Times. Um, they've switched publishers every year. Um, so now they're like, uh, new, uh, person at the helm, and they kind of switched their eligibility a little bit, but not, not necessarily trying to fit the culture of society. So when I looked up, um, the new concepts that they have going on, it is a subscription that an individual teacher or individual person has to apply for. It's not through a school, they don't deliver. They all have their models, they are specifically identified to those staff members that would subscribe to that magazine. And talking to this trainer, I really loved them. Asked multiple staff members, we asked the secretaries who are responsible for disseminating them, and there were two that are identified by her, uh, male office administrator assistant, and she said she put them in their cycle in the back.
And so, if anybody has more detailed comment, I'd love to hear it, because we have not found any others.
I went to the direction, when I went to the kitchen, I saw the comments addressed to the teachers on the table, or I went to the first line.
You saw that, that's not that magazine, everybody's?
I saw two different specific teachers' names, um, that seemed to have been thought about earlier.
Okay. Two might be Patrick, but they don't do bundles.
They were sent to the school with the teacher tags on them.
And you can, you could, a person, a person can't subscribe to Teaching Times magazine and have it sent to a work of it. But what they can't do is they can't have an entire bundle sent to, sent to a staff that would be placed in a, that is a purposeful subscription for somebody to subscribe to them. And there's a limit of two copies also, in fact, I call it, should not talk about it, it's sort of about, and there's a limit of two persons. All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Dr. Clark, I do have a quick follow-up from that. Um, you want to do that?
I'm not recording that.
Absolutely, just, just a query. So, teachers can't actually, information from a left-wing organization in their district mag, they can subscribe to that and deliver it to the school?
Teachers can subscribe to magazines and have them delivered to the school, yes. Teaching Times is an educational publication. They can do that.
Okay, so they got something from a far-right conservative organization, called, uh, Con, then that's also, like, that's wrong.
Well, that's correct. We're, we're an open public forum, so we cannot control content. Um, we can, we can control, uh, memes and, uh, time and distribution of things, but we cannot, um, control content unless, as Stacy talked about earlier, it's causing a substantial disruption.
Well, here we go, I'm going to, I'm going to worry, because it was something that was like, my opinion, I don't know how many people, none of it has any place in our school.
Teaching Times doesn't have a place in our school.
Some of the papers, lots of them, from a left, from a leftist organization, and if it was from some name or, or IRA, if it was coming from the IRA, they're standing and saying the same thing, right? This is a game of wrestling, it's always stupid.
That might not be.
Our school should be able to, right? And our other teachers, then, they will say gun safety, right? So if a teacher signs up for that, and you get a carrot, and you put it out of school, is that a problem?
It is. It is. We are not, uh, it would not be consistent with law to not allow people to subscribe to certain publications based on content, unless of course it is pornographic or, you know, those sorts of things.
I would suggest that pornographic, you're going to support, what comes into your school. None of it has any, does it have any in our school? If the teacher wants to personally subscribe to something, like, like, maybe their ideology, more powerful, they have a mailbox at the end of the right there, right? None of that should be in our school, regardless of what they respect or not, and then none of this ends up happening, okay? Just a suggestion to the board, I know my public authority, which saying anything that comes in to judging law order, you know, doesn't align, that should say it by the legislative issue.
My, my, I have an exception, our main council about the things you talk about, or almost that question, based on my background, I, I believe that it would be in my mission of First Amendment to prohibit teachers from having, uh, the ability to subscribe to publications.
Yeah, not just not in school, don't ring it in the school.
Well, okay, yeah, I'm just speaking, I'm just speaking on, you know, based on my background as a law.
Thanks for hearing me, I just think the school should be able to.
Thank you.
Hello. Um, I just had a couple more things earlier at the beginning of the year to discuss the kids going five days, and thank you so much, because my kids have excelled going back to school. I haven't heard, um, I hate school, I don't like school, it's stupid, because they remember what it was like to be home, so thank you for doing five days. Um, my name is Sabrina Price, I have two sons in the middle school, one is seventh grade and one is eighth. Um, I'm holding over the summer, and you had brought this up, Stacy brought up the subject about the masks at school. I did, you know, looking through some, I tried to research K through 10 years old that don't need to wear masks, but in our district they do, that doesn't affect my kids. Gym, they have to wear masks. My youngest is in sports, he's in footballs and track, um, basketball, they don't wear masks when they're playing. I can't see running around in gym with a mask on. I would be outraged and pass out, but I'm much older than that. Um, I don't think COVID is going anywhere soon, I think it's here to stay. And the kids need to be back to somewhat normal, being able to talk to their friends, uh, without the disguise. My older son can tell you, he's going to keep wearing a mask, but that would be his choice. I would like to see the parents or the children have a choice if they want their kids to wear masks. It might not sound like a big deal, but I can imagine wearing it, sitting in the classroom, playing gym, in gym, taking it off at lunch, and then putting it back on. I know a lot of parents fight, fought to attend the five days a week instead of the hybrid or virtual. I was one of them, and it works, you know, we have a few emails from you a day, like, 10 a day, 12 a day, but then it's slowly dissipating, and it's good to see that people must be positive about it, you know? I'm sure you still find out, even if they don't report it, but the emails have gone mad for you, and it's such a great thing to see. I think there was one, we had, it had one, and I was like, oh my gosh, there were new emails. But since the numbers have dropped and the kids have been back to school five days a week, I think it sort of shows and proves that the kids are taking more care of washing their hands and doing what they're supposed to do. So I would love, and you've already mentioned it, if we could see for the 2122 school year for the kids to be mask-free or choice of the families, if they want them to wear masks. Um, the other thing I was going to bring up, but you've already talked about, is what I saw of high school. My son is going into ninth grade next year, and we've always promoted that our masks, that you are to respect anybody versus my life's teachers, and I just hope that that's a, you know, we need to be diverse, but I hope it's something that we still need to instill in our children, not only as parents, but as school district, or as families, that everybody deserves respect. And if there's a problem, the first people that are going to come to help are, are the police or the client, and I, I just, it's something, and I appreciate you going over what happened, because I did see it on social media, and I'm like, oh my God, what is that? But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
The one I want to respond to with that is, you're the second person to mention masks in gym class, and honestly, I wasn't aware that it's happening. Masks are not required in gym class, we'll make that, I, the principal would.
Uh, good evening, my name is Jay Henry. Um, just a follow-up question about what's been discussing turning masks a little bit. I think Stacy was requiring, I could wrong Stacy, but we were requiring what the board's position might be in the future, if the state, for example, says mask is a mandatory mandate, will the board evolve that, or will they go ahead and make their own decisions based on what they want to do at that time?
Well, ultimately, the board will make the decision. My recommendation to, to the board be, uh, if, if one of the mask mandates goes away, that we would not wear masks at that time, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, great. Uh, second question's a little bit of a funny subject, but I promised my daughter that I'd ask you. So my daughter is a middle school lead, her last year, uh, in middle school, fortunately last year recess, which is known as a super important, a youngster. And I was going to say in a year, just about anyway, but, you know, other than today, we have something to say next year. But, uh, you know, she has certainly expressed more of those throughout the year, that recess is pretty rough. And I also have another child that's in another elementary school in the district, and, you know, my, my middle school child has expressed that, um, you know, there's no kickball, there's no football or something like that, of course, uh, and, you know, there's no allowing students to play drop equipment, stuff like that, and it seems like our daughter's sort of managed those things in place. Again, it's coming from, you know, middle school age child, I don't know if all that's structured, I can totally bring it up.
Well, I mean, great wisdom comes from children, right? So what I'm thinking is I've not done a good job of communicating the new outdoor rules with our elementary folks and our lead folks, and I don't think I did that yet. There, there's not a prohibition as there was at the beginning of the year to use equipment and, and that sort of thing, so I'm going to take the blame for that, and I will get it fixed.
Great, thank you.
My name is Gabriel Alak, I'm a student of Gustaf Lane, and I have two kids here at Middle School Elementary, Licanama, and I'd be remiss to me if I didn't come, and just wanted to say thank you to, uh, the board, Dr. Clark, Mr. Cameron, for the wonderful experience my kids have had in Northfield Elementary here. Um, I've been in education, so I'm very well at public education for 20 years, I'm a school counselor at Southern High School for the past 14 years, and I'm currently in right now, and my wife's a mentor, um, education, she's a fourth grade teacher, we have been in many schools, and we see the wide variety of education across this area, and I can't tell how to impress, I'm, yeah, on how this school system is doing, and we took it out of the cloud with the board, and, uh, with this, Cameron, at Northfield Elementary. We have kids, I have two kids, one's a typical parent, and one's special needs, so I've seen a wide variety of education here, and I just wanted to come tonight, because I was a little late, I was reading the news leader, and I saw the other guy, Mr. Hoven, who's also a friend of mine, and what you've done for the Northwoods, you've been going to schools, I think is just a whole, um, how you teach the whole concept of kids. It's not just about a test score, it's not just about a number. These kids are taken care of at their school. Every single teacher my kids have had have made an impact on them. I cannot say one bad thing about Northfield Elementary. When Mrs. Aubeyes laughed, who was a dear friend, um, your prayer for people, and said some prayers were open that the right person would be Northfield Elementary, and boy, did you hit a home run on Mr. Cameron. We see him at church every Sunday, he's a man of faith, he's a whole lot of, and he's someone that our kids look up to, and I, I just can't thank you enough. No one's paying to become a union agent. Um, you know, I know in public education or two, there are a lot of, you hear, you know, again, you question faith, and you hear faith, but everything that's happened here in Northfield, and I even want to go back to even like the bus driver who picks up our kids every day. One day I was running late, and I'll never forget that she pulled up to our house and made sure our kids got in safely, and it was almost like a doorstop privilege. So from the bus drivers, the aides, the teachers, you preach, you preach the whole concept of children, and how they care for them, and I'm very thankful for that, and I just wanted to thank you, uh, thank you for what you did to Mr. Hoven, his legacy, he's a dear friend, what he's given to Northwood schools, and how you honor them is very admirable, and I, I just can't thank you enough, and what our kids have done, you know, these four years of, I don't know if we all, it's going to be a sad day when they leave, but again, the one, the racial equity, gender equity, inclusiveness, I just hope that that's continued always in Northwood, and you know, there's been good things about the, so thank you.
I would just finally say that all the leadership are awesome, and I have the advantage of, of being in a building that we share, Mr. Cameron, if you are, I'd probably tell you every month or two, I'm so glad to hear it, he's been an outstanding hire, you're right, very great, thank you, and all the leadership. Thank you and all the organizations.
Good evening, my name is, I'm a student of students in, I work in a high school, I have one at Lee, I just kind of had a mission march itself here, I arrived late, so I called guys, so I was trying to talk to some of the people around me and find out a number of things that I wanted to address, have that addressed. So I'm just going to kind of move through a couple of things. First of all, gentlemen, this is up here speaking, that was one thing I want to say as, as a former student of mine at high school, having Mr. Holden as my baseball coach as well as my gym teacher and then Mr. Holden being a very close personal thing, my friend, I was so proud to see that we were trying to name a baseball field after him and recognize his legacy. He was here today, I'd like to say, so that was awesome. Thank you guys, I know this last year has probably been awful for you guys. She could have had a lot more time than you had ever signed up to, to do when you decided to, you know, run for this position, take these jobs. Getting the students, our kids back in school five days a week, speaking from a parent 's hand, it's two special needs children, it was terrible at home. There's still a little bit of harm because of it, in our opinion, but the work we made a product of being in school five days a week is a tremendous, tremendous step for those kids that are kind of, when they're in a situation like that, there is really a distance learning platform that's going to help out the types of, the type of instruction that my children need, so I really, really appreciate that. Having a student athletes and banging kid adults up, just getting those programs, you know, let's modify, just find some way to salvage seasons and performances and all its stuff. The mental health aspect of that had a tremendous positive effect on our children. We saw, we started to give service in our children, kind of getting, you know, staying in the classrooms and not getting around to ninety-one, go outdoors and then when sports and stuff started to come back and ban and things like that, it just sort of had a tremendously positive impact. And that is a great example, if anybody ever wants to try to knock on those programs, how, we appreciate the program, we appreciate the programs even more after going through that. One of the things I did want to talk about tonight, it sounds like it's been discussed, I'll just say something really quick, was the younger situation at high school, I did also see that too, very concerned about that. It's my understanding that there have been total falls, my housemate, a kid home was telling me about it. I'm glad to see that, I, I, it sounds like we either have or we really discuss with the students what the deeper meaning of it is. I, I just have to say that I'm a little concerned, you know, my interpretation may be not the way it is intended to be interpreted, but I'm aware that that's a part of help, maybe disguise and we need to see if there's a deeper issue going on there before that would become, God forbid, something much worse. It's having a child in that same school, that concerns me until we have that conversation and, you know, I'm sure there's privacy concerns, but it would be nice once we've had that conversation and effectively communicated what that meaning was and additional stuff for taking to maybe see if somebody needs help or not. Just the interpretation of things like fascism seems that like it wasn't really paying attention in class in my opinion, so. The last thing I want to do right here is tell you, we try to keep our kids online for certain things and it was, and I reported to you a few years ago when I had a child who had been to leave and then I was in middle school, it's how the prevalence of social media is used to communicate with students, torn assignments, specifically Twitter. Not to just throw it about that, you know, we, we did decide when it was appropriate to allow our children to go onto those platforms, I kind of regret doing that. I would really like to say, I'm seeing a lot of teachers posting a lot of personal stuff and a lot of political stuff, but I really do not think is appropriate for if they're having students follow them. I think there's nothing wrong with requiring them to have a professional account and then have a personal account and then those things separate. My employer would require me, Augustin Farming would say the same thing, I'm sure most employers here, who spoke about being a public employee and talking about how made filter, I couldn't agree more with, with his comments as well. You know, I'm, I'm a little bit familiar with the Teaching Cards magazine that the other lady was talking about, just because the title of the Teaching Cards, that sounds great, but we all know we can play with titles and words and then what's really the content in there may not necessarily be what we want there. And that card is mainly about taking away their first amendment rights to receive that as long as they're able to receive it, say, at home. I, I think any reasonable alternative would say that they're not restricting their first amendment rights by sending, can't receive that type of stuff at school. That's, that's my opinion and I would really like to see the board move. If we're going to continue to use social media, I'm sure we'll integrate that even more in the future if we can separate personal and professional. I'm still linked with some of these teachers who are seeing pictures of them doing stuff with their family and their kids and wow, that's great. I, I just think it'd be great if professional wasn't one account and personal one. Other than that, I would appreciate that you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
We have a hard stop eight, but we're willing to stick around for them if nobody else says anything. We want to hang out and actually, you know, what about is that, at least it's open today or today, but isn't that awesome? But we saw tonight, if anybody wants to come up and speak, and if not, I think you're just going to sit there for about an hour in silence. Anybody else ask Paul? It was a lot clear, we heard a lot of students wanting to speak with Lincoln to get feedback on it. It, it's no secret that you're on a lot of using social media, specifically Twitter. And like I say, it's worked over the years and we'll, we'll make arrangements, that's what we need to do, so I do appreciate that feedback and I appreciate everybody being here. It takes, you know, courage to come up and, and speak in front of a group and I thank you for doing that. And anytime, you be any of us or anything, we are hoping to, your comments and the heads and it's a really, really tough year, but we know it's tough around getting this on us, so we thank you for everything you've done to get your kids through this year. And I, I hope that we start on a better rhythm, we're going to start on time five days a week and it's jumping great, so. Thank you, the others.
Yeah, I'd like to ask another lady right here and I just, I have to thank all of these teachers because I know if I can, definitely a lot between the students and the board and the parents and everything. And for the community members, just know that anytime you're job to remember, you take it seriously and you take it to the doctor, but you take it to the administrator, so follow up on that. I'd like to take it lightly, like a small, let everybody know that and when the subject reaches the students, looking into later things, all the situations and that, it's appreciated. Thank you.
And getting out and speaking and confronting people every day, which one of us can be proud of, I'm much more. It's, it's not that easy to get out and come and express an opinion or review or start or not knowing if someone else might perceive what you're saying. So it takes courage to do that and you have to be able to look at things from all angles around the issue and do the best we can to make good decisions and try to do the things we can to protect their safety, help them through these challenging years of growing and there are so many layers to that roles and I say there are roles because the people that are becoming and the people that are growing into and they're learning along the way, what they like, what they don't like, and there are different things too. And that process from the time they leave and well past the time they leave our world, so you remember that, they have, one of those beautiful patterns of the roles that they will then one day leave society just like all of us are because they're going to take our place. And hopefully they will also, I encourage, to be able to voice their concerns, voice their opinions and do it in a respectful way that allows them to be able to work with others at that time. So pray for them.
I just want to say that I appreciate the fans of patience, I just, we're not saying this is a difficult job, it's challenging and you're there and I think you understood that we want to balance not just children, but parents and administration and staff, the community, people that don't, children in our school. So it's really tough to find meetings because the relationship with us is that we are very grateful.
Yeah, so actually, we do have a, the next round has executive session, we have, the board has said about being an executive session to talk about personnel, so we're going to go into that, so somebody needs to make a motion to go to executive session.
So we're going to make a motion to go to executive session and then we're done, so just so you guys know, we don't need to hang around for seven reasons, one, we have enough to manage.
Another meeting, actually, other than the treatment, after the executive session. And the purpose is to, consideration of the personnel.